Okay, it's 6:01. I would like to call this meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item on the agenda is to nominate a board chair. I would like to open the floor for any nominations.
I nominate Tina.
Any other nominations? Okay, if not, do we have a motion to accept this nomination?
Make a motion to accept Tina as the board chair.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Congratulations Tina.
Yes, congratulations.
So I'll turn it over to you.
You're done now Chris.
Your power is done.
So then I suppose I will take a nomination for vice chair and clerk.
I do.
For vice chair and clerk.
I make a motion to nominate Jeff as vice chair.
And I, can I make another nomination?
Well, you have to get a second for that first.
Do I?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I wasn't sure with the small boards.
I don't know if that pertains to reorganizational, so we might as well be on the safe side.
Okay, and do we have a second for that? Okay, and then what?
You can.
Okay. And...
No, not yet. She did, are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations? I would like to nominate Lynn, just because I feel like if I'm not here, she has a lot of experience and knowledge in subbing in for me. So is there a second on that one?
Can I second that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
I'll second it.
It's like, yeah, kind of like petition time, yeah.
Yeah.
Now will we, any other nominations?
Okay, so declare that closed.
So we'll declare that closed.
And, um...
Discussion?
You can do discussion, but you can either do pa- paper or just raise hands, it's up to you for each nomination.
Okay, so like private ballot or...
That's totally up to you. Now honey, this isn't going to be the hardest thing as chair.
No, I don't even have any paper. I mean, I have paper, but...
You can just raise your hand.
All right, um, let's vote and by a show of hands, who would prefer Jeff as vice chair clerk?
Jeff, you're not even going to vote for yourself?
Well, that's what I'm waiting to, can you? Yeah.
And who would like Lynette as vice chair clerk? So, you're happy to? All right, so...
Chuckle Jeff, why not?
Majority rules.
I didn't think about that.
And Lynette will be chair, or vice chair and clerk. All right, next we have to pick our GRCSU voting members.
No, those are...
Appointed?
Yep.
So I would like to appoint...
No, these are remaining men, members of our board first. You're using mine. So just, just for instance, say that there are three of them are going to be...
Right.
So all she's doing is remaining members of the board, she just needs to write it out on her paper. Because Chris wouldn't be able to figure out that two of us or whatever, it's kind of hard. He would need three fingers for that.
But you two stay on, right, because you're doing negotiations?
Well, no, this is just the board itself.
Oh, okay.
We've got nothing to do with GRCSU yet.
I thought we, okay, all right, I thought we heard that.
So it's 10:00 PM and... Jeff Colom.
Now you go on the other one.
All right, and now for the GRCSU voting members. Like you said Jeff, I think Lynette and I should be on it because we're on the, the negotiations committee, which is branched off of that. So then there's one other member left, and I think if I'm looking at experience wise, I think Tim would have more experience with that board. So I was going to appoint him for that. But do I need any motions on that?
It's all up to you.
Next we need to come up with a regular meeting schedule, which I think is pretty much dictated with Chris's schedule to second Monday of every month.
I'll make that motion for 6 o'clock. 6 o'clock okay for everybody?
And then it doesn't...
Do you want to discuss the location?
That's what I was just going to say. It doesn't mention it on this page, but I do think we need to discuss location. You know, we have been meeting here during the pandemic because we didn't want to tax the school with extra germs and whatnot, and I think ideally it would be good to go back to the school because the space is bigger if we do have community members that want to join us. This is kind of crowded, especially with the camera right in the center of the room, and I don't think it's as welcoming, however, we're down custodians right now, so I don't know if this is...
I would question if I could. If we go there, Chris, we're not set up for Zoom meetings there. That was one of the reasons it was easier here, because you've got everything. And I know the last few times we were at the cafeteria, we actually had to have Greg come in, so what is, I guess what is easier?
Why was it in the cafeteria versus the library?
Well, only the way, I don't know if it was the way the library was set up. I don't know how we did that. Maybe just because it was a bigger space.
Same reason.
But we still aren't set up there either for Zoom meetings. So that's my only question, is if we're going to continue with both in person and Zoom, we're kind of missing the equipment.
How easy is it to set that up? Because we have Wi-Fi there.
Well, it just depends on, I think the last hybrid meeting we had was a bit of a mess, but I think we can work with Greg and with Sarah and Kelly, just on possibly just setting something up over there, so we can, you know, give it a shot, and if there's there are issues, we'll let you know, but I don't know if you have like a portable Promethean board or...
We have one in the, a smart board in the library.
Okay.
It's kind of behind Ma'am and Sherry's office back there, so there's not a lot of room for...
Visitors.
If we're looking at the board there, if that makes sense. Can I ask a question? Are we going to continue offering remote participation for the rest of, like forever? Are we just...
It won't be forever, no, because, well, it's kind of nice if you need it, but, um...
It's just, it's...
I don't know, well, if we did it, even just phone calls and not live Zoom, it's easier, because then you just have to know who's calling in, because you've done that before.
Yeah.
It's easier, and that way they can call in. I prefer to have the people come in person, but there's some weak excuses. I know there are some people that just can't get out because of kids and bedtimes and whatever. I also realize it's, you know, even myself, I was going to be selfish, I would say, let's not even meet in person, I'll just stay home in my jammies and call. So, um, so that's a tough question, and we're really not sure still where COVID's going, so I would say probably have to stay both.
Because we could probably look at it again at the end of the summer.
So just keep it here for the rest of the year?
Yeah, keep it here for now, and then maybe we'll revisit it in August before school starts, when we kind of know what the custodian situation is also and COVID.
You know, and I know how the budget is, which, so it's not even like we can get some permanent equipment. I thought, remind me, um...
Well, maybe in the meantime Greg could look into it, you know, for, if we just say we'll continue here.
I do think it's nice. I think it increases access, having the hybrid situation, but I also think it, I mean, a lot of parents are much more comfortable coming to the school than they are to a building where they never have to go. Yeah.
But I mean, if you look, we get, we get a lot more, um... Participation, calling in. And I know like, Chris has to be here unfortunately, not that he has to unfortunately be here, but I mean, traveling wise, Chris, traveling wise, Chris, you know, that's like Louis, he doesn't have to...
Right, that's why it's helpful.
They come from greater distances.
It's helpful, right.
Right, so I don't, that's just my opinion. What do you guys think?
Should we continue it here until we get something set up at school?
Well, that's what we were thinking. We'd revisit it in August-ish and just see what the situation is.
Well, maybe even over the, by the summertime, we can have something set up there.
Till the end of the year?
Even get into a classroom or the science room or somewhere where there's a smart board if we need to do it that way, but I, yeah. That's what I would suggest.
I like the idea to revisit in August.
Okay. So central office for now and then revisit.
Second Monday. Second Monday, 6:00 PM.
GRCSU office.
And then the annual board retreat? We haven't done that since I've been on the board.
Since COVID, that's why, so, um, last year it was even just held, and then see how the, how it goes. Yeah, I mean, it's even hard to have a regular meeting, never mind a...
So just ignore it for now, or is that what that legislative meeting was in September?
No.
Is that part of it? That's different?
Yeah, that's different. Yeah, no.
So just hold?
Yeah, I would just put that on hold. Chris, nobody else is setting a, get together, yeah.
We can make that decision later on, too.
So it kind of went on hold like it was for us to bring all the people in and discuss the residents, have them come in and talk to us. That was put on hold for the last two and a half years. This has been on hold.
So hold on to the board retreat and the annual meeting?
I, well, no, why is annual meeting on here?
I think just, you know, when the informational annual meeting would be typically, you'll have your pre-town, which we don't know.
Right, which is in January.
But then you, but then there also is that annual information meeting, which is the...
In January.
The night before voting, so that's, I think, voting next year, it's on March 7th, I do believe, so that would be March 6th would be your...
Pre-town. No, it would be town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I don't remember doing that before.
And we'll be going first next year?
Yes.
So that should be nicer.
No sitting around for hours waiting.
And then we have the choice to use Robert's Rules in general or Robert's Rules for small boards?
I'll make a motion we use it for small boards.
Everyone, for it, yea or nay?
Yea.
Aye.
So I made a little, if we could pass that, I just made a little copy of the information for the small boards.
You have no idea what you're in for this year.
I did parliamentary procedure in school. I think this is awesome.
Can I, can I copy this?
I didn't make you a copy, but I'll be happy to forward you one.
Can I, can I copy this in Florida to Rotten City?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I'll do that.
Anonymously.
No, 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 no.
I can give you my copies, because I have more.
I'm old enough now to just say she's losing her mind.
So one was, on the back is from the VSBA reorganizational little five-minute video they had. I just took a screenshot of it, and then the other one is actually from the book that Tim and I both have, apparently. So it just has...
It's a different book.
Oh, it's a different one?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Well, it's from my book, which is about the brief version of Robert's Rules of Order. And basically it just means if we do the small boards, it's a lot more flexible, you don't have to stand to be recognized, the chair can vote, discussion can happen before a motion, things like that. So...
It is a friendlier version.
Yes, and we still know, do not need seconds on motions.
Only, only to approve to use it, right?
Apparently. I was like, really?
All right, I wasn't sure, but better off, because we hadn't actually set that yet, that's why, I think.
And then the code of ethics, I think everyone got that in their packet. So that needs to be signed and handed back to Chris.
All right, and then we'll scan and send you a copy of that. I'll, Christine, do that for you.
Does anyone have any questions on that? And then the locations where the agendas and minutes will be posted, I believe they're posted online on our website, and also in the office on the bulletin board. Is that still true, Sarah? You need to find two spots, right?
Yes.
I think it went to the bulletin.
There, it's the bulletin board in the office, and then I also see, have seen it in the teacher's room, but I'll double.
But it's also on the website, so for the general public, because they're not going in the teacher's room.
And Christine McGinnis does that, correct, Chris?
Yes.
To make sure they're all on the website.
And that's right on the GRCSU main calendar.
Okay, because I don't have Ma'am do that, so I just assume.
It's just that the, the public has to be able to access it, so if it's in your office or in the teacher's room...
I believe Christine McGinnis does it for online.
Yeah, but we have to have two places.
Yes, it's in the office.
And we also post here, this is our office as well.
Okay.
And a copy is sent to the clerk, town clerk as well.
So it's at the town office, it's at our central office, it's online, and it's also in the office at the school. So it's actually in four spots.
Yes.
Good.
Great.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we also need to affirm the choice of attorney. We, in the past, have used Chris Leopold, and unless someone has a reason not to continue, he does all of our negotiations, so he's very in tune with what's going on and supervises reunion and therefore can help us with the district matters. All in favor?
Nobody made a motion yet, I'm waiting. We had a lot of nods, but...
Yes.
I make a motion to have Chris Leopold be our attorney?
Yep, and all in favor?
Aye.
And then the media sources, we have Peg TV recording.
I'll make a motion for Peg TV.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then we, as a board, need to authorize...
Sorry, do you also want to appoint a newspaper, a print media source for that as well?
Sure, the Rutland Herald, is anyone?
I nominate the Rutland Herald as a print, print media source.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Never voted for him, it's stolen.
Okay. For yea, one of the... We also, as a board, need to authorize the administration to request and expend available grant funds from the Agency of Education, as well as state and federal funds. Motion?
So moved, and then I have a discussion.
Aye.
I just want to make sure, Louis, we need that, correct? That motion?
Correct, that's required.
Okay, that's all I want.
And...
Aye.
We also, aye, we also need to authorize the board to borrow funds for the UUSD, whatever that stands for, pending receipt of payments from the State Education Fund. Can anyone please clarify what UUSD is?
Louis.
Louis?
Unified Union School District.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can see that top page of yours.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't, you have to make sense out of it, and I didn't fill them all in.
We also need to authorize the board chair to sign director's orders and other documents on behalf of the board as necessary.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain from that, just because I'm the board chair.
Doesn't happen often, but it's really handy.
Tina, do you want to nominate a second person in case you are unavailable to sign orders? Some of the boards have...
I'd like to nominate the vice chair and clerk, like I was last year.
Oh, that's right, we did.
Can I make the motion?
You can.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to nominate her as a backup sub for signing those orders. All in favor?
Aye. I'm loving this meeting.
All right.
And you can do this now or wait, if you want to think about it, unless there's some of this that comes up. If you're ready to go, go, but...
Well, the, so for the committees, is there a finance committee? Because I haven't heard of that.
That's usually the executive board, which is, would be you, Lisa, and Eric, if he's staying on. It's usually the chairs.
Right, well, see if Lisa, through Reorg, stays as board chair now. So right now it'd be Eric and you.
So we don't need two from this?
Don't.
Okay. And then the negotiations committee would still be Lynette and myself, because we're still in the middle of that. Policy committee, I'd like to have Billy and Jeff continue with the policy committee, and I think you both are doing a great job.
Yeah, you can slow down, we don't need eight all at once.
I know, we had a lot this time.
We did, we did, that surprised me.
And then, I don't have any other listed on this sheet that we need to do, but I was wondering, hiring committee, if that was something that you were interested in, Tim?
I did it the last time, I'm, I'm good with that. How's the interviews been kind of playing out?
Well, I'm in the, we're, I'm about to start on one this week, but we don't have any others on the horizon right now. So, and I don't mind helping in. If you can't make it, I would be happy to be a sub for that, because I enjoy doing it and I have a lot of experience with it.
You do.
I also will have a lot more responsibilities with this now, so I don't want to take too much.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I was part of it the last time, so I'm fine with that.
Thanks. And then I think we're done with the reorganization bit.
Right.
So next up on the agenda are teacher, staff, and community comments. Is there anyone online that would like to say something? Kirk? Go ahead.
Oh, hi, I was just, first comment is that I tried to attend in person, but the doors were locked.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was a, we can't unlock them for some reason. Superintendent has to be taught how to unlock the door, but it was wedged open shortly after you were probably here.
Okay, and then the other is a question, there are two different policies in the family handbook that our family is concerned about, and I'm wondering how to address that.
If I could, that handbook is done through the summer by the administrative staff, so I would suggest either emailing Chris or Sarah and...
And Eric.
And Eric, and...
Eric or me.
Yeah, well, Eric or Sarah, and Chris, and that way it'll be looked at, but typically that's, that's when it's put together for the new year. This year...
And then is that approved by the school?
So, so Bridget, is that a, are you talking about the school on the student parent handbook or board policy on our website?
The family student handbook.
Okay, a lot of those would be procedural issues. If there was a policy that may be printed reference, those would be board approved, but a school procedure, the board would not approve school procedures.
Okay, and then my cousin Kirk and I would like to renew our request to be able to speak with the executive board. We clarified the question that was hindering us being able to speak to the executive session, so we would like to renew that request.
If I could, I'm just going to jump in because she's new chair. You'd have to go through the same process, you'd have to put that in writing to the superintendent, he'll pass it on, and they'll review it, and the chair will respond to you and let you know.
It's the same request, we, we already...
Okay, we still need a new one, because we ruled on that already, and it was denied, so that one's dead.
I didn't realize anyone ruled on it.
Okay, we, we did, I denied it. I sent you an email on it, denying your request. So if you have new circumstances or anything, if you have new circumstances, whatever, you can put that in writing again and request it, but the other session has been dealt with, it's over.
Okay, for us it's not over. So our student hasn't had access for...
Okay, we're not going to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, this isn't, this isn't...
No, we're not going to get into that in, in open session. You're not on the agenda, so we're going to have to...
Oh, I thought we were in public comments, I'm sorry.
We're in public comments, but, but we have to watch what you say in public comments. I think we reviewed this when you came in, and I had to actually agenda meeting, so just put it in writing.
But I have, the, the public comment I have is not part of the request to be in the executive session. This is something separate. I mean, it's related, but it is not the same request, it's specific to us, it's a public comment.
Okay, if you can make it...
But I'm missing...
If you can make it short, go.
Okay, so our student has not had access to school for 116 days.
Okay, I want to stop you right here. I'm going to stop you and discontinue your conversation. You make it sound as if the school would not let your child attend, your school, your child has never come through the doors, he actually is not a student at Rutland Town School this year. So please, put in writing, send it to the superintendent, and he'll forward your request on to the chair, but I can't let you continue, that's very negative and not true.
But, but, but this is a, we are residents of...
I understand you're residents, and you want your child to come, and you've been told, just bring your child to school, which you refuse for numerous reasons. This is getting into that executive session that you didn't want publicly aired, and you're headed that way. So I'm, I'm just going to move on right now. Can you please disconnect her? Please. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'm really worried.
Are there any other comments?
I still have a comment.
I'm sorry, your time's up.
But you revealed our whole per, you revealed our whole personal situation publicly.
I have not, but we're trying to actually mute you, so please stop talking.
But I just, I just...
We're moving on at this point. I'm sorry, we're moving on.
Yeah, so the comment that we obviously have every right...
Not when you attack the school, Kirk.
I'm not attacking anybody.
Well, you haven't said anything yet.
But we have, as citizens of this town, an absolute right to make a comment about the due process that's afforded to anyone who requests to come to the school board.
Kirk, can I?
And so you're saying that we want to do that again, and we, and here's the bottom line, ma'am, we absolutely deserve to be treated in a fair and impartial way. If, once that's done, considerations are made, and there is a decision, but you clearly have already made up your mind, from what I can tell, and that is not the way an impartial school board should function.
Kirk, do you really want me to go into great detail, excuse me, I'm talking. Do you really want me to go into great detail on this? You have, as we said last time, you have bypassed the school board. You have gone to the state of Vermont education system.
That is a false statement.
Okay, that is not a false statement. They did, they also made a recommendation, told you that Rutland Town School has gone above and beyond trying to assist you, and so you're done. It, it, you're done. Coming to meet me for the board...
So you're saying our kid can't go to school?
No, you show up with your child.
We're done, that means...
Okay, no, I said you're done. I didn't say anything about the student. We would never refuse...
Ma'am, we have no one else to talk to. The school board is it.
I just told you, if you show up, if you show up with your child, your child would be welcomed and put into a class.
Our child was disenrolled against our wishes, so it means to us that we show up to go to school.
Okay, it was, he was disenrolled because you, you had too many... Okay, it was, he was disenrolled because you, you had too many stipulations, wouldn't go with the options you were given. I didn't want to do this in public, but if you really want me to, I will. This board, this board, the superintendent, the principals, and the state of Vermont have bent over backwards trying to accommodate you. It is impossible. We cannot do any more than what we Can you not get rid of her?
And you wouldn't afford us the opportunity to come in and give our side, that's how, that's how impartial bodies work, ma'am, right? And then
Yeah, please.
I'd like to
You touch this totally.
I'd like to call a recess. I'd like to call a recess.
We're going to recess for five minutes.
Alright, our board is back in session. Recess is over. Any other community comments? Or concerns?
I'd just like to ask if there was a decision made about allowing us to put forth a request to join next executive session?
Or finish our comments to give our side a summary.
So unfortunately, it was not set on the agenda, and I think part of that is because there hasn't been any further dialogue from the last time you came to a school board meeting. And without having the executive session set up so that we could hear both sides, it would be a waste of time to do it tonight, because we wouldn't be able to make any final decision. But as Lynette had mentioned, if you, in writing or by email, talk to our superintendent and set up a meeting or request that again with your new information, because your original request did not meet the requirements to have an executive session, but if you have some new information and you'd like us to reconsider, please go through that process, and hopefully by next meeting, if it's deemed that it should be held, we will do that.
But what if nothing has changed? I mean, nothing has changed. From the last time we requested, literally nothing. We haven't done anything, we haven't had any
Well, that, I think the, I think the major difference is that when you came in, you had different information than what had been presented, so if you could give, I guess that, you know, data
We could put our part out in the request.
I think that would be very, very helpful. And then we'll, and then we can go from there, once, once you contact our superintendent.
Okay, I will do that, and I would just add, obviously, what the former chairwoman was saying is very, you know, was very definitive about what has happened. But I would ask the board to please, at some level, disregard that because she has only been
If I could, if I could say, there are three board members here that are not aware of what's going on.
But they are now.
No, they don't. Okay, no, they don't. Go ahead.
I'm just saying that you said the school bent over backwards. All those kinds of things are very impartial. They're saying, they're making a judgment. But you, I just wanted to be clear that you haven't
So there's your two sides, because, there's your two sides, because I'm saying you've had it all, and you're saying you haven't. So if you contact superintendent, get asked to be put on, if that is granted by the new chair, then you can come in and state your reason in front of the other three board members.
Yeah, because we would have sent our kids in if we felt comfortable.
Okay, we, we're not going to, we're not going to continue discussing this.
It would really be best if we save those type of comments for an executive session, because I don't, I don't want to
Okay, great.
Make our other members
We have our own, so we would be happy to do that. This is embarrassing, obviously, but, so yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Kirk?
No, I'm sorry, that's, that's great, thank you.
Alright, seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of the agenda, do I have a
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
New business. Anyone have any new business? The elevator.
Well, I was going to, I was going to ask that, and then I thought finance was next, but I could ask Louis then, or, you can now
Well, I just wanted to thank the voters of Rutland Town for approving the bond for our elevator. We're very excited to start the process of figuring that out, and I was wondering, Louis, if you had any plans to start that process?
So I spoke with Kelly, I think it was either the next day or a couple of days after the vote was approved. And we have come up with a kind of a soft plan to work on building specs and pull together the necessary paperwork, so that we could possibly go out to bid this summer. And then, because the project is large enough, it can't be done during the school year, we're looking at starting doing the project next summer. We don't think we can pull together all of the information and get a bidder that would, that isn't booked already to get the elevator in this current summer. By the time we got everything out, we'd be looking at probably April at some time, and then we'd get board approval. I would imagine most companies are already booked, already. We'd have a hard time getting a qualified bidder with short notice and have it still be competitive. So we're looking at next summer, next summer completing the project, which gives us time to pull together specs, get enough bidders, and as well as go out to bond.
Thank you. Also wanted to thank the voters for passing our budget. Makes our lives a lot easier.
Yay, kids' lives.
And, yes. And then, moving on to finance. Louis?
Whoops, wrong button. Start with the wrong button. So in the packet were some finances, the monthly reports. If there's no questions on those, then I'll talk about the audit. But first, is there any questions on the finance reports?
I just had a question about the tuition in-state being so much different than what we had budgeted. Is that due to MSJ? I don't, it was like 175,000. It was on page one of the expenditure report.
I don't have the details in front of me, but as far as the student counts and why the variance may be there. But I can definitely look at it and get back to you with the answers next month or email you. But one explanation could be is that when we budget for the new seventh graders, I'm sorry, in your case, it'd be the new ninth graders, we may draw all their tuition into one line, because they don't know necessarily where they're going. But then as the actuals come in and may differ. But if we look at the forecast that I provided, that can kind of give us a better sense. I can just open up that, open that up real quick. So I think we looked at that last month. We looked at the forecast.
Yeah, you didn't send it this time, right?
Uh, no, we looked at it last month and the month prior with the person. So looking at tuition, in-state tuition, we're estimated to be down by about 70,000. The private tuition is up by about 137,000.
For the current year?
For the current year, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it does say, it does, just so you know, it does say 170, well, almost 175,000 deficit on that. But, yeah, if you could just, I would appreciate also being advised on what that is.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a closer look at that.
Thanks.
To get back to the details. Any other questions?
No, not on that, sorry.
Okay, so the audit was completed for FY '21. A copy of the audit was sent to the Rutland Town School for each of the board members. If you haven't picked yours up yet, if you're interested, it should be in the office. If you're a new board member, they were sent with each of the prior board members' names. So if you're a new board member and you didn't get one, just let me know.
That's okay, Tim can have mine.
So there was three things to talk about that were in the audit. Three findings. So two of the findings have to do with student activities. The first one is there's a new GASB rule, which states that we have to now produce warrants for all student activity expenses. So currently, student activities is managed by the school. The checks are cut by the, by the school front office. They're signed by the school principal, and all the reconciliations are done at the school level. They are part of the audit. In a further check and balances, GASB requires that we print out a warrant each month with all of the checks that were cut for the student activities, and that go to the board, kind of like the warrants do now for our AP checks. And then the board could just read those into the minutes and review those, and then the board chair would have to sign those warrants as well. So that is a new procedure that we would be putting in place starting in April. The next thing regarding student activities is just as they look at student activities accounts, they look at expenditures to make sure that there's the proper backup for all checks that are being cut. And one of their findings was that there was not enough documentation to substantiate all the dispersments. So their recommendation is just that we make sure that for any dispersments that are coming out of student activities, that we ensure that there's invoices dated and signed, and any other proper documentation to support that expense. And this is, both of these findings for student activities are showing up in all of our districts. And then the third finding was the purchasing procedure. So currently, we, our procedure requires that appeal be done in advance of any purchases. And the auditors have found instances where the schools were purchasing or having, started initiating expenses before the purchase order was done. This has been, I mean, this is a common issue that we've had since I've been a business manager with every district. And it's due to a number of various reasons. It could be emergency purchases, it could be just other people that are making purchases in the building with lack of knowledge of what the procedures is. So it's definitely something that I work with building principals and front office staff every year to go over the procedures, to make sure that and I stress it every single time we talk about finances, that a purchase order is being done, and it's being done in advance of when the purchase is being made. So I will continue to stress that at admin meetings and with front office staff each year, and hope to do a training this summer with front office staff and principals on a review of all the procedures. And other than these three things, everything else was good. They confirmed the, they confirmed the fund balances that I reported at the August meeting. All of the finances matched. There's no adjustments or anything like that. Any questions on the audit or anything else?
Thank you, Louis.
You're welcome.
Sent agenda director's orders. Any questions on, or discussion on those? I had one. Did we get a new 3D printer to replace one? So the other one broken, or?
It was just dated really, really slow. So we actually got two 3D printers. So we have, Mike Rowe has an older one, we have one. Katie McDougall is going to share one with Patty Carpenter. So it's just, they, she wanted to do some more 3D printing with the kids, and it, it's very, very slow. So we wanted to get a new one. I know that one was donated to Kelly McGee too, by a family, so
Aww.
Yeah, we were just hoping to get some a little better, a little faster.
Good, that sounds great.
I make a motion to approve the warrants.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the minutes. Any discussion? I found one little tiny typo, page six. Under the principals' report, it says Sarah advised they have a lot going on, and there are lots of pictures. I think she meant to put, there are a lot of pictures. Just a small grammatical error, but thank you, Shawna, for doing such a great job. They're very detailed. I need a motion to
I was reading them, and all I could think of is we talk a lot.
It was very long. A motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next up is the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Tina. I'll be brief, because I know we have other items to discuss tonight. But at first, was, most of the month has really been prepared around town meeting, getting budgets prepared, you know, just to fill those lines. But I do want to say thanks to Louis and to Sarah and to Eric for all their work, help us prep and get things ready to go. I also want to say thank you to all the Rutland Town community members and citizens for voting yes. And once again, just supporting our Rutland Town staff and our students and, you know, to provide our kids with a quality education. So I do want to thank you. I know that this was a, it's been a difficult year, as the past couple of years have been. I know that there's some political issues that were at the center, but I just want to thank families for just kind of, you know, staying, you know, focused on the students and the student learning when voting for the budget, so I'd just publicly say thank you for that. Along those lines, I know that, you know, everybody's asking about COVID. I know that today was the first day that all GRCC schools and Rutland Town School, mask optional. I know I was out at a couple of schools, just visiting, just, you know, seeing, and it was, you know, there were a few people who didn't recognize me because first time they see me without a mask, they've never met me before. It was nice to see, but I know that it is, it's still a cause for concern for some families, you know. And so I think we're looking at how best to, as we transition to this endemic phase of COVID at our schools, how we can best support all students. And I think that's something which I do thank our staff and our counselors and administration for working with both, you know, families and our students, really just understanding that, you know, respecting everyone's decision around whether or not to mask. I think that's one that's, it will be kind of an evident flow as we move forward, but like I said, I just, you know, want to say thank everyone. There was new guidance from Vermont Department of Health that came out today. Dr. Levine released that press release. I sent out information to all the families around 5:00, 5:15 today. It really was just around isolation and quarantine guidance, so it really just more in line with if, you know, someone has COVID, what to do, or if they're identified as a close contact or are a close contact. And there were some shifts from, information was sent out on Friday to today, particularly around masking, that there was a shift from if, particularly around individuals tested positive for COVID. Last Friday, the guidance was that they would, should remain, wear a mask for up to 10 days. Today, they shifted that, that after five days, that they can return to school as long as they are, you know, their symptoms have reduced, or they've been without a fever for 24 hours, without a fever reducing medicine. And there still is a recommendation that, you know, yes, if symptoms persist, or if they want to feel safe, that they could always take the precaution of wearing a mask. And, you know, like I said, the update on close contact was very similar to that. But it is something where, I know a lot of people asking what happens if we have another wave or another surge. And as I've been saying for two years, we really is a day-to-day situation where we are working with the AOE and the Department of Health, and we haven't followed their guidance, and so therefore, we will continue to do so. And if there are changes, then we will let, we'll let families know as soon as we can. But I do want to thank everyone for their patient understanding, and as well as if there are questions, obviously, to reach out to your school nurse or to Sarah or to Eric for more information, so. So, and there was also a real lengthy legislative report for you to kind of peruse, and I know that some of this information has, will be updated shortly. But those who receive the VSBA emails, you should have a copy of the blog as well, so.
I heard that some representatives from the Vermont State House have have gone to school board meetings and given updates on what's happening. Is that something that we've ever done here?
Our representative, Tom Taranzini, has come a couple of times. Other than that, I can't think of anyone.
Because we have a lot going on in the legislature that's pertaining to Rutland Town. I feel like it would be good to?
I would reach out to him because he is our town representative and have him come in.
So I could reach out. I know last week we met with the local representatives and senators to discuss some of these issues. And I think if the board would want, you know, I could reach out to our reps and senators to see if they'd be available to attend, just to answer any questions you might have or, you know, share any concerns that you might have as well with some of these bills. Because there are some things that will have an impact on Rutland Town as well as the SU that that might be better just to hear speak from them and they might enjoy that as well. So if that's something which you want, I could?
Would it be better to do that in May after the session ends? So we know how things are?
No, before, because then they can, they would understand our feelings, I would think.
So sooner rather than later?
Right. I know Senator Taranzini had voted against a couple. There's a couple that disturbed me, but I want to talk to Louis about them. But yeah, so it's probably better than to wait because that way they'll know how we feel and it may or may not change the way they vote on something. We still would still have a chance at that point.
So better not to wait?
Right.
Okay. So?
I could touch base with Tim.
That would be great. Maybe the next meeting, can see if he can get there. Thanks, Chris. Principals report.
Thank you. So we want to thank you to all of our voters for supporting our budget. We're very excited. We would like to congratulate the, our Rutland Town School rock climbing team. They took second place in the state earlier this month. Student Council is looking to host a dance, so hopefully with everybody's blessing. We would like to do that in August. We'd like to just start off with?
April.
August, sorry. April. With seventh and eighth graders, just from our school. And then the hope would be to expand that for all the middle school and then eventually have, bring it back to what it used to be, to bringing other kids. So they are planning that. Sback will start at the end of the month. We have preschool and kindergarten registration open for the school year. So anybody out there that has a preschool-aged child ages three to five, please register them online. And you can call the main office for screening dates. And then kindergarten registration is the same. We ask that if your child's going to be five years old by September 1st, so please register them online for kindergarten. High school registration is open, or pardon me, begins for Rutland High School on the 28th. So our eighth graders are getting signed up for their classes, depending on where they're going to school next year. Up for learning, I'll report on that next month. We have a few more updates that I can report next month. There's some building matters here. Louis and Kelly applied for a food service grant for an additional food warmer. Solar update, thank you to parents that were understanding and bus drivers as well with all the traffic coming back from February break. The, it is all completed. The panels are up to code, the new inverter is in, and it should be running soon, if not already. Spring cleaning. Some of you saw me picking up stuff when that snow melted and then it came again. So it's just around the corner. Some new heating ventilation shaft that's being put in. We're installing a larger security camera in the main office. And new air filters and all units will go in in April. We have some important dates coming up. Friday is in-service. I forgot to put on here our UVM Outstanding Teacher Day. So Linda Mullen is being recognized. So that's next Wednesday, the 23rd, and that unfortunately is remote. We were hoping that that would be in-person this year, but that will be remote. So again, congratulations Linda Mullen and all those teachers in Vermont that have been recognized. And then parent-teacher conferences and student-led conferences will be on Thursday, March 31st, and Friday, April 1st. And we will be offering in-person and remote. And that's it?
On the in-service day, what are you, are like a program for the teachers?
Oh, yeah. So there is a number of things. For me, I'm primarily focused on preschool requirements. Since we're overseen by the Agency of Human Services, there's a number of things that anybody working with preschool staff, such as CPR, first aid, orientation to preschool. And then there's another, a number of other options, depending if you're a specialist teacher, special educator, or a classroom teacher. Options assigned, both live sessions as well as some pre-recorded. So there is some time for our counselors that are participating up for learning. There's some time scheduled for that as well.
And then the last meeting, you talked about a survey out to the kids about lunch. I was just curious, has there been any updates since then?
So I never heard back from them. That survey was given to all the kids, but I never got any feedback on what was in the survey. But I will say I have been seeing more of a variety. So even just our cut fruit today, there was oranges, apples, and cut-up watermelon, different salads on the salad bar. So I don't know if that, I never saw the results of that survey, but I have seen a little bit of a change in the food offering, especially on the salad bar.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Tina, I did one thing I forgot. I just forgot to congratulate you on your reelection and as well as Tim on his election.
Thank you.
Technically, reelection, but an election, so. Welcome to our podcast.
All right. Any other questions for Sarah?
I just had a quick, I was reading the previous minutes. I don't want to go to, but maybe during the lunch conversation, there was lunch on the, or conversation on the lockers. When was that conversation going to be had, like in?
I think we're going to revisit that in the fall. We, I think we talked about survey, asking our students for feedback.
A similar survey.
Yeah, we don't have money in the budget for it. I thought, I brought it up last meeting because when I was, I believe I was present when they decided to take them out and see how it was. I was under the impression that they were putting them upstairs and holding them to see if we still wanted them or not. But I think according to you, a lot of them were in disrepair and weren't worth keeping. So they were gotten rid of.
They were moved quite a bit. They were good lockers, but they were moved.
Well, my opinion is they just needed some TLC.
Yeah.
That's all they needed. I had gone through all those lockers the previous summer and they just needed a little TLC.
But they're gone now. So with, you know, that being said, going forward, we don't have money in the budget for next year. So we're going to see how it is and discuss it before we do budget for next year.
I have talked to some kids. It's one of the things I think they look forward to as going into the middle school is having a locker. And some kids don't want to leave their items in TA. You know, they're encouraged to leave some of those things in their TA. But I've talked to a lot of the high school students who have said, we never use our locker at the high school. So get used to it. And they've said that in graduation, that when the seniors come at graduation, almost every time they talk about Chinja Cook having been such a good experience. And you'll never, you're never going to use your locker at the high school. So.
So?
And I have to say, I have a daughter that doesn't use a locker at the high school. So I, I mean, it, there's some nice things and some not-nice things about lockers. So I think we can bring it up for discussion when it gets closer to budget time.
Right.
Or just, yeah. Whether it's that or just alternative opt. It'd be interesting to hear what the students had to say as far as like options. Because like, well, so my daughter's DA is in the library. I don't know if that, like, is that the same as all the other TAs? Like could, because it's more communal, right?
Yeah.
It would be?
Yeah, more people passing through.
Yeah, and whether or not she would want to leave her stuff in there. Well, she forgets her stuff in there all the time, you know, but whether or not she'd want to leave it.
And it's true, not just the students, we should also include the teachers in the survey.
Yeah, yeah.
For the lockers.
No, I just saw it in the minutes. I wanted to, I didn't know what timeframe that was, just so I could kind of keep it in my head.
Can I add something as well? We, this is a time where Mike Rowe is one of our PLC leaders for the middle school and he plans Chinja Cook every year. And this is the time we start planning for that for the fall. And unfortunately, Chinja Cook can maybe, maybe accommodate one day trip, but they don't have the staff right now and they're not sure if they're going to recover from all of this. So we did reach out to Hobart, which was a recommendation. They were extremely expensive.
I think that's why we went away from them to begin with.
Right, they were really pricey. So Mike and teachers are working on some team building, similar to what we did in the fall with some of our other grades, with rock climbing, some ropes course, hiking, et cetera. But it's not Chinja Cook. So if anybody else, I know Jeff, you had mentioned Hobart. If anybody else has recommendations, please send them my way. It's just like everything, the cost goes up. And staff is hard to find.
Does it have to be during school?
What do you mean?
Like a weekend versus a weekday?
Yeah, it's just finding the staff that's available.
We can look at all kinds of things, but, you know, I think Sarah Yu had said it was over 500 now for Chinja Cook.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a lot of money. And most families can't, you know, do that. So some kind of alternative, hopefully. I mean, things are coming back around a little bit, hopefully.
Who knows what could happen? But usually this is the time Mike gets everything together.
Right.
You start doing, believe it or not, field trip requests for the fall and all of that.
Well, if there was, if there was more funds available, could we do something in-house more type of thing?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to do?
I mean, they did a great job with what they did last fall.
That's what, so we're going to do the same thing. That's what we're going to do.
Kind of build on that in-house?
That's what Mike said. We're just going to try, and that's what we said. We're going to just build on what we have and it was better than nothing.
The kids enjoyed it. They really did.
Yeah, it's just Chinja Cook again. That's what you hear from those kids.
I can't compare to that, I guess.
They come back and they always, those two things. You'll never use your locker, Chinja Cook was a first experience, and DC.
And DC.
Yeah.
How is DC trip coming around?
Good. Final payment is due tomorrow, I believe. Yeah, we'll meet again in a couple of months and?
Good.
Yeah. Our kids are signed up.
Personnel. Contract recommendations? Any discussion?
I didn't print the new ones.
It's right here?
Yeah, I just.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve these contracts as presented.
And just for the minutes for, and for people at home, Katie McDougall for a middle school science teacher, Patricia Carpenter for an art teacher, and Lisa Dayton as a softball coach.
Were these on the internal? Okay, so you have posted?
Yeah, they were posted internally as well as on school spring.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then in your packets were the internal vacancies. Supervisory union.
And I keep telling everybody, if you want a job, just, you know, there's a lot of them out there.
Then the chairs report. Do you have anything, Lynn, from Kerry over? I don't have anything new that wasn't discussed. Actually, I do have one new thing. I noticed on the VSBA site that they had mentioned having an advocacy person from the board as someone that would keep up to date with the legislative updates. Kind of like every meeting, just update us on anything new that was going on. Just something to think about. If you're interested, let me know. If you want to be that point person, just to kind of keep all of us up to date. We're hoping that our rep will come in and give us an overall snapshot, but he can't come every meeting. So it'd be helpful to have someone that, you know, has their pulse on that. So let me know. And then I think we're on to policies. Any discussion on any of the policies? You're all first read. I had a little grammatical error on the student freedom of self-expression one. It was?
I was hoping that would change when you begin chair.
It was halfway down on the first page. Under the definition of student journalist, it says means a student enrolled in the district supervisory union who gathers. And it's supposed to be compiles, I believe, instead of complies. It's just a switch of the letters.
Yeah, so it really isn't a change.
Yeah, it's just a little grammatical error. But I didn't have any other comments.
Well, I mean, there's a difference between complies and compiles.
There is, right?
So that's, yeah.
I think it was?
Radical, right. That's, yeah, so. Thank you for bringing it up.
You're welcome. And then I, actually, I have one more comment. On the ones that are blank, where, you know, fill in the blank for your supervisory union, are we, will that be filled in for the second?
Yes.
Okay. I know that is for expediency, it was left that way. But just want to make sure that we're voting on it. All right, so we don't have to vote on any of those? Old business. Anyone have any old business?
I can ask one question. Sarah, so we're, I assume, getting ready to take down the skating rink?
Yes, yeah.
Do you need to ask the public for any assistance in that or?
Let me circle back with Kelly. The weather's been so wonky. Like it's been freezing, I'm like, don't, don't take it down yet. And then it's like 60 degrees, right, but now it's?
Now it's really changing.
Now it's really changing. So let me touch base with Kelly. Thank you for offering. And I do want to thank the fire department. They came in and helped with the gym mat for voting, but because it was just Kelly. And it was during a time where other people were busy. So thank you so much, the Rutland Town Fire Department, for helping set up and disassemble voting. That was a huge, huge help. I will touch base with Kelly and let you know.
Okay, yeah, just let us know and then we can put it out there. You know, even if you wait till next weekend, at least you can put it on the weekly notices.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of people, I mean, it wouldn't take long to take it down, but.
Any hands make light work, so I will ask.
We got some of the local hockey teams to help.
You have seen how they're all done with hockey?
Yeah, I know. Might be a little ice there left for them to?
Yeah, exactly.
Flight on or something.
Will there still be as much? I don't want to say push, but like, will people still be anxious to do the outdoor, outdoor classrooms and things like that, that we kind of took advantage of during like the height of COVID? Is that still going to?
Yeah, I think with all of that, I mean, people, as you know, get their master's degree in outdoor education. It's tough, especially with little kids who go out there to read. It's like, bird, squirrel, there's my friend, where's my hat? So I think it's a, it takes time to do that. But our hope is that, yes, there's all this beautiful space. And it was definitely used more. And I know like our kindergarten teachers, for example, they go out for Forest Friday, no matter what the weather is, every Friday, just because we have this beautiful space out there. So that is the hope. But I think our teachers definitely learned it is, you know, you think I'll go and do a book club out and we'll sit here and then there's bees and mosquito, just distractions that you're not prepared for. So that's taken some time to get used to for sure.
I would, I would like to ask about today with optional masks. How did the little ones go from not? I know one personally and they were so not sure because they've never been or seen anybody's faces. How excited were they?
They were, they were, some were, and we definitely have kids and adults with masks. But I received more hugs today than I have in a while, like since the first day of school because they could see, they're like, Ms. Ted's up here smiling. I'm like, well, I'm always smiling under here. And then some kids that I have only seen their eyes, that I was, almost wanted to go and be like, can I help you? It took me a second to see and just, yeah, there were a lot of excited kids, or little kids especially, really excited.
That's what I figured.
But there, again, there's a lot of people that are still wearing masks and it was not a big deal.
Nope.
Yeah.
And it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
In fact, I heard one parent say, well, I told my two, just because you chose not to wear yours, don't you dare make fun, any fun of anybody that's wearing it or say anything rude, because if I hear about it, you're wearing your mask for the rest of the year. So I thought that was kind of a cool thing.
Yeah, and I definitely saw some kids just doing some really, there was a couple of classrooms. There was some students that brought a mask because when they were working with their friend, they were wearing a mask. So I thought, oh, thank you so much. They said, oh, I'll put my mask on if I'm reading with you. But it was different. Just like Chris said, some people probably haven't met him without a mask on. And it was some of these little kids, you know, in. mask on. And it was some of these little kids, you know, in second grade. I haven't really seen them for a long time without a mask on. Um, so it was great. It was a good day.
I figured it was because we didn't get any email saying, um, well, yeah. So I was wondering how the, especially the little ones, they, oh, I should have gone in and saw.
Just on the busing, I had one this morning and none this afternoon that wore masks. But I am putting down additional windows for airflow.
That's nice. Yeah. Yep.
Well, it wasn't until-
The weather will help.
Yes. Definitely.
It wasn't until the last minute that they finally said, we didn't have to wear them on the bus because we kept saying, well, it's going to be masked, optional, but they have to wear them on the bus. So I was really glad, Chris, to see that they had done with that.
At the same time and our company said, yeah. But I'm still going to wear mine just for a while.
Well, it's nice because any, if a child comes on-
Some of the drivers are, some of them aren't.
Well, I'm just saying, if a child comes on with it, they feel more welcome. I'm not the only one on the bus that has one. It's just awesome.
And the kid, I tell you, the kids were, I saw, not that I could see their faces a lot, but they were happy today.
That's good.
High school was too, when I dropped off my older daughter.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
They're all like bouncing out of the cars. Yeah. It's kind of fun. Um, can I circle back to the outdoor classroom? Um, as a parent, I've come in and helped with four wins and I noticed that the outdoor space that's, um, kind of behind the hill in the, in the forest right there on the preschool side.
Yeah.
Um, it was all in disarray. It looked like kids over the summer had taken the big, um, logs and made boards or something. And it's really not set up anymore. And I know green up day is coming. I didn't know if that could, you know, be-
That would be awesome.
A project that could, you know, start going in the newsletter, let people know, you know, let's set up our outdoor classrooms. Let's clean up the litter at the school.
Yeah.
I mean, we're short-staffed with our custodians and if the community wants to come in and help make our school look awesome, that would be great. And I don't know if Kelly, like, wants to take a look at what we have and like kind of set up a plan for that if we have volunteers that want to help out. Cause I think a lot of times if there is a project that someone's interested in helping, they're more likely to do that than try to find one.
Right. Yeah. I think you'd find a lot of people on green up day because a lot of times, well, yeah, but I don't know what road to do and what, you know. I think you would get a lot of interest with let's-
A section, right. Yeah, yeah.
Especially the families that really go all out. And then it's like, when we finish our road, let's go to the school.
Right. Yeah. Right.
Does the town sign up, like at the town clerk's office? Do, do people sign up for certain roads to do?
You know, I don't know.
They don't organize it like that.
As far as I know, they just go for bags for the, for the green bags.
I know where I live, you, there, you can sign up for certain streets and roads and you can sign up for sections of the school at, you know, the country store, the town clerks, the gas stations.
It works really well when they do that. Um, I don't know. I know usually green up day, I'm over in Maine and they have signups and people join.
Sections.
We, well, we do the beaches.
Oh, right.
Um, you know, they have so many people and they get humongous crowds of people out there cleaning everything up. Um, so yeah, I think if we tried to formalize it a little bit, um, like the school, because I think people would be excited to help at the school.
I do too. Um, Carrie Clark would probably be the best person to talk to and ask how, how she's organizing it this year and that we'd like to be included.
Yeah.
And if there's a sign up.
Yeah.
Cause when I took the kids out for four wins last week, they're like garbage.
Once it, the snow melted, I was like, oh my gosh. And I found one of our vote school signs like with the wind that we had. I'm like, oh my God, neighbor's lawn.
We've had some wicked winds. So God only knows what came up. Yeah.
So I, um-
Like that's not an animal, animal print there. Look for, look for the prints. Look for the tracks.
Yeah. So I'll touch base with Carrie Clark and Kelly. Um, and he did message me back and said, thank you so much for offering to help. He's going to wait until all the snow melts for the rink, but he'll be in touch. So he'll reach out if he needs help.
Anything else? So it looks like the next meeting's April 11th. I, I was not aware of an executive session tonight that we needed to have. Okay.
I make a motion. Will you adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.